Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Nicholas Scutari. I'm the senator from the 22nd Legislative District. I also have the honor and privilege of being the Union County Democratic Chairman, and it is an honor to be here today for our annual reorganization of Union County Government. And we've been doing this for well over 20 years now, since Charlotte DiFilippo and Jerry Green were chairpersons of this fine organization, and I've had the honor and privilege, the last few, to be able to run these reorganization ceremonies. We've got a great team assembled, as you can see. We're in our room, which is unusual, but I think it's going to move even smoother, and I appreciate the county commissioner's willingness to still move forward with this, because I think that they deserve the accolades and the honors for all the hard work they do all year, because after today, they've got to get back to work. So I appreciate everything that they do and all we do as elected officials. We're honored to have the governor here. He's going to be saying a few words in a moment, but before I do that, I'm going to call upon the sheriff, Sheriff Corvelli, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance and the salute to the flag.
Up there, please join me in the pledge, pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, you can all be seated. Okay, the first order of business is I'll be calling up our own Union County Clerk, Joanne R. Joppe, to certify the elections. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Senator Scutari, Governor Judge Wallace, distinguished guests. Happy New Year to everyone. It is with a great pleasure that I certify this election as true and valid, and I'd like to read the certification. I, Joanne R. Joppe, County Clerk of Union County, State of New Jersey, do hereby certify that the following named persons to wit, Alexander Mirabella, Kimberly Muded, James E. Baker, Jr., received the highest number of votes and were duly elected for a term of three years to the office of members of the Board of County Commissioners in and for the county of Union, New Jersey at the general election held on November 2, 2021. In witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and affix the seal of said office this sixth day of January, 2022. Congratulations.
Ordinarily, we are in the county courthouse, and we get the real pleasure and honor to be in our assignment judges' chambers. It has been traditional that they have loaned that to us for the day, but in these new times, we're over here in a much smaller gathering. But we did want to give the opportunity to our newer assignment judge here, Judge Morales Walsh, to come up and say a few words to us. Judge.
Okay, hello, everyone. I generally don't get nervous speaking in public, but I really don't know many of the people here, but it really was important for me to come across the street, even though we're not in my courtroom today, in order for me to introduce myself to everyone. I'm so pleased to be here. I'm enjoying my time as the assignment judge, and I'm really still in awe of the fact that the Chief Justice gave me this opportunity. I'm a kid from Elizabeth, and I know a lot of you are kids from all the towns in Union County, and I think everyone should be very happy that you really have excelled in your careers and gotten to this point, and it's something really to be proud of, for sure. As Senator Scutari said, we are usually across the street in my courtroom. It's still hard to call it my courtroom. It's so gorgeous and beautiful. I welcome you all to come and see it anytime you would like to. It's open to you. It's open to the use of anyone in the county, whoever wants to use it, just give me a call. I'm happy to open the doors to you. I congratulate the newly-elected four members of the Union County Board of County Commissioners. I thank you for your public service to the citizens of this county, including me. I'm honored to be here tonight and with Governor Murphy, who I'm meeting tonight for the first time, incoming Senate President-elect Scutari. Always happy to see Senator Scutari, and I thank him for his tireless public service and his willingness to communicate with me always. I also want to thank the entire county administration team that made everything possible here today. I want to specifically recognize Ed Oatman and Amy Wagner, as well as Sheriff Corvelli. They have welcomed me so warmly. They have been always willing to communicate with me, and I am really enjoying getting to work with them in my new capacity. As the Union County Courthouse, as everyone knows, cannot thrive without the cooperation and the collaboration of all the administration from Union County, and that is appreciated by myself and my judges. So it's wonderful to meet all of you. I'm happy to be here on this happy occasion, and I thank you for including me in this important day, and I can't wait to see everyone back in my courtroom next year under better circumstances. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you, Judge Walsh, and I actually know Judge Walsh. Judge Walsh was kind of a, no one really knew you before you became the assignment judge recently, but I was very proud and honored to see that happen. I think she's going to be serving with us for many, many years. I wish you the best of luck. We're going to take you up on that. Hopefully, the Democrats can host every year from the rest of your career. But that's a product of the team that we select, and I'm so proud of the individuals that you're going to meet tonight that have gotten their new three-year terms. And next, Governor, I want to call upon you to say a few words before you swear anybody in, but I do want to indicate to you that, number one, we're going to go a lot faster than when you and I were in Bergen County last week, and it's a lot warmer up here than it was in Bergen County. But also, celebrating his reelection, the leader of our state, my friend, Governor Phil Murphy. Governor.
What a treat to be here. I haven't missed a Union County reorganization, Nick, in many years at this point, and I'm honored to be back. As everyone I think of the state may know, I've been exposed to someone in my household who tested positive, so I'm going to keep my mask on, even though I've tested negative five or six days in a row. What a treat to be back. You have an extraordinary chair, an extraordinary senator, an extraordinary chair of the Judiciary Committee, and about to be an extraordinary Senate President in Nick Scutari. So I want to give Nick a big shout-out. Really excited to work with him in that new capacity in the years ahead. I'm incredibly honored that Al and Kim and James asked me to come up and swear they're in. It's a big deal for me, so I'm very humbled by that, and we're going to get to that in a moment. And to all the commissioners and senior staff, led by your distinguished chair and the whole team, God bless you all and best of luck in the term ahead. To the other elected officials, Joanne, you do it as well as anybody. Sheriff, likewise. Mayor Adrian Mapp right before me here. As Groucho Marx once said, "If you're any closer to me, you'd be behind me." Not sure what that means. Judge, it's an honor to meet you and look forward to being in your chambers next year, and I have the same wish for the future that Nick has. May we always be in your chambers and may they always be Democrats. Listen, this is, these are days when we, you know, you turn the page. We all either have a D or an R behind our name, and we wear those letters with great pride, and we never give up the principles and the reasons why we've become a member of one party or the other. But when you swear folks in, when you have a reorganization like this, you also, while you respect that letter behind your name, you realize it's time to govern, and no county does that better than Union County. And the evidence of it is overwhelming. And by the way, that's everything from politics, by the way, I wouldn't be reelected without Union County, Nick, all the way to the way you govern. And this group is an extraordinary group. You've got great mayors, great constitutional officers, and the best legislators I'd argue of any county in this state, and we have a lot to look forward to. While the times remain challenging, by the way, these COVID numbers are going up like a skyrocket. I think, and I'm only saying, I think this fever's going to break, I hope, in a matter of days in terms of cases. The hospitalizations will lag somewhat behind. And by the way, this county has paid a huge toll, notwithstanding the extraordinary job the county has done, led by these great commissioners, it's paid a huge toll, especially in black and brown communities. There can be no denying that, and we don't learn the lessons from that at our peril if, God forbid, something like this ever happens again. But we are going to get through this. I really believe we are, you know, we're closer to the end than we are to the beginning, thank God. We know a lot more than we used to know. Our economy, which really started to come back last spring, has been impacted a little bit here, without question. I can't tell you how many people I spoke, speak to who can't find folks to fill their jobs, the positions, but there's also no question it's getting better. There's no question about it. Our brightest days are in front of us. We're the most diverse state in the United States of America, and no county speaks to that more so than Union County, and we are, at the same time, for all of our diversity, we're all New Jerseians, 9.3 million of us strong, and our best days, as I said, are ahead of us. I'm incredibly honored to be here. Nick, I'll leave you with one last thought. Today is the anniversary of the January 6 assault on our Capitol last year. God bless America. Please, God, let us stand up for democracy. Let us never see days like that again. God bless America. God bless the great state of New Jersey, and God bless Union County. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you, Governor, for those inspiring words and looking forward to working with you in the potentially a new capacity starting Tuesday. I don't take anything for granted, but there's a possibility I might be changing titles on Tuesday. It is really a great honor I get to introduce our county commissioner. He is a former Freeholder with me, the last one on the board that served with me when I used to sit in the same room, and I think we were the last ones to sit in the room when it used to be configured in a different direction before we reconfigured. Al Mirabella is the dean of our Freeholder Board. He's a great commissioner. He's a great friend. He's a great public servant, along with his wonderful family here. I've known him for almost three decades now. Been a while, two and a half at least, and he's really what public service is all about. He's a great friend, and I know that everyone here is going to extend a warm welcome, and I'm going to bring him up with his family, and I'm going to call upon the governor to give him the oath of office. Commissioner Mirabella.
Congratulations, buddy. What a treat. Who are you? Phyllis, nice to see you. Alex, don't worry, man. Hey, Michaela. Congratulations.
I state your name.
I, Alexander Mirabella.
Solumly swear.
Solumly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office.
All the duties of the office.
Of county commissioner.
Of county commissioner.
Of the Union County Board of County Commissioners.
Of the Union County Board of County Commissioners.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
To the governments established.
To the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Do you want to stand in front of her? Yeah. Want to stand in front of her?
Yeah, yeah.
Come on, everybody. Ready? One, two. Two minutes, Al.
You know, I almost didn't let Al speak because of what he did the last time he was chairman. We all remember that. Commissioner Mirabella.
Yeah, I remember very well, Senator, so I am. I know, you remind me frequently. As I enter my 25th year as a county elected official, I'm truly humbled to be here to serve the residents of Union County for my ninth term. I'd like to thank Governor Murphy for taking the time to swear me in today. I'm continuously impressed with his leadership, specifically his genuine care for the people of New Jersey. His handling of the pandemic was a model in crisis management. Thank you, Governor, for all you do. Special thanks to Senator and Chairman Scutari for his tireless leadership in our county. It was no surprise to me that his colleagues in the state senate are poised to make him the Senate President next week. Senator, I know you will help our state to even better days. I appreciate our long friendship.
Keep going. Stay home and talk.
I wish to really give Chair, incoming Chair Williams and Vice Chair Houdak, and wish them only the best for a successful year. Chair Williams has set out an ambitious agenda for a set of initiatives. I'm proud to know her and work hard. I know she'll continue to work hard for the residents of our county. The last few years have been particularly challenging, but we've emerged more agile and responsive to our residents. We basically reinvented how government services delivered. I'd like to thank my colleagues for all their help and support during my last two years under my chairmanship. They worked hard, and I'm grateful for all your efforts. My sincere congratulations to my running mates, Kim Muded and James Baker. I look forward to serving with both of you for the next three years. Many thanks to County Manager Oatman and Deputy County Manager Wagner for their outstanding leadership in the day-to-day operation of our county. Together with our directors, they execute our vision and provide the vital services to our residents. Lastly, I want to thank my family for all their love and support, my children, Alex and Michaela, who grew up in government and have had the two public servants for parents. They've grown into fine adults who will work hard and give back to their community. I particularly want to thank my wife, Phyllis, who is my daily inspiration, my most trusted advisor, the woman I love. Her support is unwavering, and her advice always thoughtful. I love you. I know this commissioner board will beat all the challenges that await us in 2022 and work hard for our residents, and I want to wish everyone a happy and healthy New Year. Thank you.
Great speech, you see? I can do it. I knew you could do it. I knew you could do it, Al. Couple of minutes, people didn't even fall asleep. It was great, wonderful. Thank you, and I mean that. Al Mirabella, I could joke with him because he's such a dear friend that we've served for so many years together, like with many of you all here, Adrian Mapp and Ray Giacobi and friends. I mean, you guys are not just my friends, you're my family, and I know that the governor feels that way as well about the Democrats that have embraced him for all these many years. We've got a great team here. I really couldn't be prouder of the work that you guys do. I'm really happy about it. Next, it is really my honor and pleasure to introduce to you for her second time Commissioner Kimberly Palmieri-Muded. She's done a heck of a job. She's really a stand-up person. Really got to know her a few years ago during the chairperson's fight, when not everybody in her town was really in favor of me, but, to say the least. But her and her husband really came forward, and we campaigned tirelessly together. We knocked on every door in Westfield. Some of them were slammed on us, but we kept going, and I really grew to appreciate that service and that dedication, that loyalty. I was so happy to see her become a county commissioner three years ago and even happier to see her get reelected. She is a wonderful public servant. She's got a beautiful family. You're going to meet some of them, not all of them, I don't think, but you're going to meet some of them today. I don't know how she does it all. I really don't. She balances the, all the intensities of being a county commissioner. She's got a wonderful, unbelievable educational experience and professional experience before that, and all those great kids, and she even keeps George in line somehow. So with that, I want to introduce to you Commissioner Kimberly Palmieri-Muded. Please come forward. Swearing her in will be Governor Phil Murphy, and holding the Bible will be her husband, George, joined by their twin sons, Matthew and Christopher, son Nicholas, son Ryan, and daughter Adeline. Now, they're all coming up. I was wrong.
I brought them all.
Yeah, I don't know if I might bring the Bible. Yeah, I may. Sorry for the, the Bible. No, she forgot it. The Bible, no. Okay. That's my guess.
Hold that up. Mom's going to put her left hand on it and her right hand. All right. You ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. I state your name.
I, Kimberly Palmieri-Muded.
Solumly swear.
Solumly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office.
All the duties of the office.
Of county commissioner.
Of county commissioner.
Of the Union County Board of County Commissioners.
Of the Union County Board of County Commissioners.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Government's Establishment.
And the Government's Establishment.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Do you want to sign that real quick? Go ahead.
Governor, thank you so much for being here. If you have to run, we understand completely.
Am I not doing, James? I don't think you are. I think the mayor is doing it. Okay. All listening to Kim.
And I know his schedule is tight because he's at so many of these events that I'm at. We've been shadowing each other for the last week and a half, but with that, I would like to introduce to you formally the reelected commissioner, Kimberly Palmieri-Muded. Congratulations.
Good evening, distinguished guests, family, and friends. Thank you, Governor Murphy, for joining us here tonight. It has been an honor to be sworn in by you. It was also wonderful to campaign with you. It was kind of fun being on the ticket with the governor. I appreciate all of your leadership, especially these past two years, and I look forward to four more years. Thank you, Senator Scutari, for your confidence in me. I have this tremendous opportunity because of you, and I look forward to continuing to work with you and hopefully in this next chapter as Senate President. I would like to acknowledge my running mates, Al Mirabella and James Baker, along with all of my colleagues on the commissioner board, Sergio, Rebecca, BJ, Chris, Lourdes, and Angela. It's a privilege to know and work with each one of you. We also have the best county manager, deputy county manager, department heads, county employees, and volunteers that make our county so unique. Most importantly, I would like to recognize and thank my family. I have been the most fortunate person to have had parents who have always made me believe that I could be and do absolutely anything in this world. They encourage me to be strong, confident, and committed to whatever role I am in. And as luck would have it, 13 years ago, I was blessed with in-laws that made me feel the exact same way. I cannot even express how special today is that my parents and my in-laws are here. Two years ago to today, my father-in-law had a critical illness, and we never imagined that we would be here, and I cannot tell you what an honor it is to have my mother and father-in-law here with me today. As for my husband and my children, there is no one that inspires me more. Everything that I do is for you. George, this whole thing does not work without your support, and I thank you every day for that. Matthew, Christopher, Nicholas, Ryan, and Adeline, I hope I make you as proud as you make me. You define who I am, and I'm so blessed to have you all here with me tonight. March of 2020 put a pause on literally every plan we had, but instead of sitting back, county government stepped up in a major way to provide for our residents. From the very beginning of the pandemic, Union County was at the forefront, providing PPE, testing, food, and later vaccines to all of our residents. It was an all-hands-on-deck event, and I even have to shout out my mom, who I think is outside with my daughter, but my mom even came out of nursing retirement to administer thousands of vaccines over the past year. We were able to pivot quickly to provide services virtually, outdoors, and in other creative ways so that our residents were never without assistance. I am so proud of what we have and continue to do on a daily basis to fight through this pandemic. Although it certainly was the defining aspect of my first term, I know we will get through this and be able to accomplish so much more in the next three years. I am humbled to be here, elected and sworn into my second term as Union County Commissioner. I look forward to serving our residents well for the next three years. Thank you so much.
Kim, thank you so much for those comments, and George, I always think of you guys as a team. Sometimes people call George more than they call Kim, but I'm going to stop doing that this year. Governor, thank you so much for being here. I appreciate it. Thank you, Governor. Before I get to our newly-elected and installed commissioner, I do want to take a moment of silence, talk for a second about our departed surrogate, Jim LaCourt, passed away recently, was one of my running mates back in 2000, and, no, it was 99. 1999 was my running mate. He served this county with distinction for over two decades. He was a dear friend to many of us, and he will certainly be missed. He gave me a wonderful sweatshirt at the last Democratic event, and I wore it proudly upon his passing. So if we could just have a moment of silence for Jim LaCourt. Thank you. Okay, now, back to our regularly scheduled programming. The next, it gives me great pleasure to introduce to you our next county commissioner, James Baker. James, Jim Baker may be new to the county organization, but he's not new to politics. He's been a long-serving Raway Councilman for many, many years. I've seen him at so many events. He's done a great job representing the county of Raway, the city of Raway. Then when this next opportunity arose, myself, in consultation with his local chairperson, O'Brien, and his mayor, Ray Giacobi, a dear friend, there was no other person that we'd rather have up here joining this illustrious group of county commissioners. You deserve this job. You deserve to be here, and I'm really happy that you won. I'm happy to introduce you today. And with that, I'm going to call upon the mayor of Raway, a dear friend, Ray Giacobi. He'll be administering the oath of office to James Baker, and holding the Bible for Commissioner Baker, Jr. is his cousin, Reverend Raymond Wallace. Please come forward.
Before we swear James Baker in, I just want to talk about leadership. When I first became a councilman, I sat next to Mr. Baker, Councilman Baker, and he didn't know me very well. Of course, you know, we talked during the campaign, but he sat down and he said, "Son, if there's anything you need, here's my number. I'm a phone call away." He handed me a pen, and that meant the world to me, and I called on him many of times throughout my career on council, just to call, get his opinion, chat. We didn't always agree, but we always had the mutual respect for each other. James, it's an honor to be here to swear you, and I want to thank you for this honor.
Thank you for being here. Come on, sir. You walk over there this way. Put your left hand on the Bible. Raise your right hand. Okay, here we go.
Please repeat after me. I, James E. Baker, Jr.
I, James E. Baker, Jr.
Solumly swear.
Solumly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office.
All the duties of the office.
Of county commissioner.
Of county commissioner.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the government's establishment.
And to the government's establishment.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Yes, absolutely.
Come on, man. You got a quick take.
Kim, thank you so much for those comments. And George, I always think of you guys as a team. Sometimes people call George more than they call Kim, but I'm gonna stop doing that this year. Governor, thank you so much for being here. I appreciate it. Thank you, Governor. Before I get to our newly-elected and installed Commissioner, I do want to take a moment of silence, talk for a second about our departed surrogate, Jim LaCourt. Passed away recently, was one of my running mates back in 2000 and, no, it was 99. 1999 he was my running mate. He served this county with distinction for over two decades. He was a dear friend to many of us, and he will certainly be missed. He gave me a wonderful sweatshirt at the last Democratic event, and I wore it proudly upon his passing. So if we could just have a moment of silence for Jim LaCourt. Thank you. Okay. Now, back to our regularly scheduled programming. The next, it gives me great pleasure to introduce to you our next County Commissioner, James Baker. James? Jim Baker may be new to the county organization, but he's not new to politics. He's been a long-serving Rawway Councilman for many, many years. I've seen him at so many events. He's done a great job representing the county of Raw, the city of Rawway. Then when this next opportunity arose, myself, in consultation with his local chairperson, O'Brien, and his mayor, Ray Giacobi, a dear friend, there was no other person that we'd rather have up here joining this illustrious group of county commissioners. You deserve this job. You deserve to be here, and I'm really happy that you won. I'm happy to introduce you today. And with that, I'm gonna call upon the mayor of Rawway, a dear friend, Ray Giacobi. He'll be administering the oath of office to James Baker. And holding the Bible for Commissioner Baker Jr. is his cousin, Reverend Raymond Wallace. Please come forward. Stay there. Reb, come right over here.
Before we swear James Baker in, I just want to talk about leadership. When I first became a councilman, I sat next to Mr. Baker, Councilman Baker. And he didn't know me very well. Of course, you know, we talked during the campaign, but he sat down and he said, "Son, if there's anything you need, here's my number. I'm a phone call away." He handed me a pen, and that meant the world to me. And I called on him many of times throughout my career on council, just to call, get his opinion, chat. We didn't always agree, but we always had the mutual respect for each other, James. It's an honor to be here to swear you, and I want to thank you for this honor.
Thank you for being here. Come on, closer. You walk over there this way. Put your left hand on the Bible. Raise your right hand. Okay, here we go.
Please repeat after me. I, James E. Baker Jr.
I, James E. Baker Jr.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office.
All the duties of the office.
Of County Commissioner.
Of County Commissioner.
Of the Union County Board of County Commissioners.
Of the Union County Board of County Commissioners.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
To the governments established.
To the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Commissioner, it's an honor to be here. Thank you.
While we're doing all the official business, I do want to say to the County Commissioner Board, thank you for still holding this. There was a lot of thought to maybe do it virtually. We scaled it down, but I'm really proud to be here. You deserve the accolades because of all the hard work you do each and every year. This is the one time when everybody's here to say nice things about you. I know that this room is filled with people that don't want to say nice things sometimes, but you do the right thing every time. And I'm so proud that we're all part of this organization. With that, please welcome, we're gonna, we'll take it after his remarks. Commissioner James Baker, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner. Whoa, I was getting ready to say Commissioner Scatari. That would be a demotion. But I do want to say thank you to our party chairman, our senator from the 22nd District. And, you know, I want to thank him for the opportunity for being here, first of all. You know, it was a funny thing. When his office called me, I didn't know what the heck was going on. I said, "What did I do wrong?" You know, I said, "I didn't do anything wrong." But then I returned the call and found out that I didn't do anything wrong. And he offered me an opportunity to stand before you here today. And I want to thank the party for all of their hard work and being able to put me here today. It took a tremendous amount of effort, a lot of commitment, a lot of dedication to win in November. The governor is gone, but it was a pleasure campaigning with the governor. And, excuse me. And as the mayor of Rawway said, I have been a councilman in Rawway for the past 16 years, 15, 16 years. I've been an employee for the county of Union for the last 29 years. And so my political and my professional career has been in public service. So I hope to be able to continue to do my best for the citizens of Rawway, for the citizens of Union County as a Commissioner. And I will try to faithfully execute my office, the responsibilities and duties therefor. Thank you very much.
Come on, Jimmy. It's not my first rodeo. We know what we're doing there. And it's, we did pretty good. About 33 minutes. I do want to say a few things before we close the meeting to the, and then we're gonna reorganize in a few minutes after a short break, to take official business on behalf of the Command and Commissioner Board and recognize and introduce our new County Commissioner, Chairman and Vice Chair, Chairwoman and Chair. We usually just say Chair. Charlotte DiFilippo was the chairman of the party for so many years, and she went by Chairman. But we've got a great board of people, commissioners here. We've got great constitutional officers. John R. Joppy does a heck of a job as county clerk, and Pete Corbelli is our sheriff, and obviously our departed Jim LaCourt. But we're gonna fill that spot soon, and he would want that. But I just want to say Happy New Year to everybody. I'm just so happy that we're all actually in a room. We're wearing masks, but we're gonna get through this. Been a tough year. But as the governor said, this is, I can see the light at the end of the tunnel. As much as this is really transmissible, we don't think it's quite as deadly, but we're gonna take all the precautions that we need to safeguard our family and our friends. But this is a really special day for all of our freeholders, particularly the ones that got elected, and our other six that will be reelected, hopefully. And really happy to be here. We've got a great group of leaders. I appreciate you allowing me to help lead today's ceremony. Mayor Map, I've been with him all day, commuting back and forth to Trenton with me. Thanks for being here. And Ray Giacobi for administering the oath. And to our assignment judge, we'll be taking you up on that offer next year. Got some council people here. I know we have Barry Javik from Linden. We have the Romanator, John Roman from Linden, and some others. If I miss you, please, I apologize. But thank you all for being here for these festivities. Thank you all to the county commissioners for giving me this opportunity and look forward to doing it again. Thank you, everybody. You can give them all a final round of applause. We're gonna take a five-minute recess, and they will reorganize. Thank you.
Hi, this is United States Senator Cory Booker, and I want to thank you for giving me a few moments to give my warmest gratitude and congratulations to everyone being sworn into office today. You all have been given a sacred trust. You have been entrusted by your neighbors, by community families, by friends. You've been trusted by the people of your community to share a role of leadership that is reflective, not just of your dedication, but reflective of the best of who we are. You see the ideal of governance in our communities. This is a state in New Jersey that was founded, in many ways, before the nation was founded. We came together with this ideal that we could make a great state in which the best and the highest ideals of humanity could give life to abundance, to opportunity, to community. That is a tradition that has continued, and it's continued because the leaders like you, who are protective of the most fundamental elements of who we are, our communities, our parks, our schools, our religious institutions, our roads, our connective tissue as a society, you all, the local leaders, knowing this as a former city councilperson and mayor, you all are the ones who are, in many ways, safeguarding our traditions, nurturing our community, helping us to have a continuance. You all are harboring that which is America, the best of our nation. And so I want to say thank you. This is not an easy time. We are in the midst of a pandemic. We are seeing challenges roll our ways, from epic historic storms to the fiscal challenges of an economy getting back on its feet during difficult times. All of this you are facing and more. I'm sorry I'm not with you physically, but know this, as your senator, I am with you spiritually. And I'm proud that my partner, Bob Menendez, and I have been working to bring back historic levels of resources to our state so that local leaders have more resources with which to do their sacred duty, to do their job, to lead in difficult times. 2022 is not just a new year. It will be a year of new challenges and new opportunities. And I know that as leaders ascending and assuming these responsibilities, you all will help us to seize the opportunities, meet the challenges, and continue our march forward. Thank you so much. May God bless you. May God bless our state, and may God bless this great nation.
Happy New Year. Along with myself, and I'm sure Annette Keano and Reverend Atkins, as part of the Legislative 20th District Team, want to take a moment and congratulate Al, Kim, and James for being sworn in tonight to a new three-year term. It has been quite the ride. The reality of the changes and the difficulties and the challenges of the last couple of years with the COVID pandemic has defined this Commissioner Board and its performance. And for Al and Kim, as incumbent members on the reelection, I think the election has certainly been about the confidence that the voters and the residents of Union County have expressed in the performance that you and the team that's part of the swearing-in ceremony tonight and the reorganization tonight have performed. It's not only just about, and it seems like a long time ago, that we searched for PPE, that we had the challenge of looking for more tests. It's also about the vaccine that came to us, and now it's obviously with the new variant, about testing and expanding the opportunities for those that can find their way to actually get the vaccine. The Union County Commissioner Board has defined themselves as a group that has responded to the challenge of the pandemic in an all-thorough way to understand the needs of our residents. Because it's been more than just a pandemic. It's been about food insecurity. It's been about how do we get people to interact. It's been about the mental health challenges and so many, so many other things. You all have expanded the role of government to literally come out and touch people at a time when they need it the most. You've been responsive. You've been understanding. And I think that that's part of the reason that tonight, hopefully, has the successful energy it should, because it's a validation of hard work. James, new to the board, stay a part of the team. Congratulations tonight to Rebecca Williams for becoming the new Chair of the Commissioner Board. Rebecca, you've got an awful lot of big shoes to fill with Al Mirabella, both literally and figuratively, with the leadership of the past couple of years for Al. But your tenacity, your truthfulness, your brilliance will shine through as you lead this board and continue the great work that it's had. And congratulations to Chris Hudak for the opportunity to be the Vice Chair of the Board. So on behalf of myself, Joe Cryan, and I, Annette Keano, and Reverend Atkins as well, the LD20 team, congratulations. We look forward to a partnership that's going to bring Union County through this pandemic and onto even greater heights in the future. Congratulations.
Good evening and Happy New Year to all the residents of Union County. Union County Commissioners, Governor Murphy, Senator Scatari, it is truly an honor to once again be able to join you as the Commissioner Board of Union County reorganize and usher in yet another year of cooperation and working together for the betterment of Union County. This evening, I had the honor of watching three community leaders take their oath of office to assist the great people of Union County. And I would like to take this opportunity to congratulate Al Mirabella, Kim Mudad, and James Baker. I'm congratulating you for your service, for what you will do over the next year. I know, along with the rest of the commissioners on the Union County Board of Commissioners, each of you will continue to work collectively together to bring the much-needed resources to Union County. And you will make Union County the number-one county of all the counties in New Jersey. I also want to congratulate Commissioner Williams and Hudak on being chosen among your peers as the Chair and Vice Chair of the Board for 2022. I know you will lead the residents of Union County and your peers to meet all the challenges that will arise with your teamwork, collaboration, and partnerships. But most of all, I know that we collectively will continue to work for the betterment of Union County. Happy New Year. Congratulations, everybody, and I look forward to working with you soon.
Grace and peace. This is Reverend Atkins, newly-appointed Assemblyman, LD20. I'm so excited to be coming to you. Unfortunately, due to COVID, we cannot be there, but I'm excited to be able to at least send this message congratulating all those individuals who were elected to serve as commissioners. Alexander Mirabella, Kim Mudad, as well as James Baker Jr., thank you so very much for stepping up and making this a continued journey for some and for others, a new journey. I'm excited because I get to work alongside of you for this up-and-coming year to make things happen. So congratulations to you on being sworn in and being put in place to make an impact. I also want to just give a great big shout-out to our previous Chairman, Alexander Mirabella, for all the great initiatives that you did to make this county one of the greatest counties in the state of New Jersey. You did it. You made it work, along with Rebecca. You guys, Williams, you guys did such an awesome job. And I will say to you publicly what I've said privately, and that is, Union County is making it happen because you guys are in place. So thank you so very much. I'm also excited. I'm hearing talks of who's gonna be the next Chairperson and who's gonna be the next Vice. And I just want to say congratulations to you. I look forward to coming alongside of you and working along with you to make sure that we make an impact. On behalf of myself, Senator Cryan, as well as Annette Keano, our Assemblywoman and LD20, we want to say congratulations. We look forward to working with you. And I think the word that we've been using for the last few months now is partnership. We look forward to being your partner here in Union County, and we also look forward to having a collaboration like no other. Once again, congratulations. This is Reverend Atkins. Be blessed. Thank you.
The next, it gives me great pleasure to introduce to you our next County Commissioner, James Baker. James? Jim Baker may be new to the county organization, but he's not new to politics. He's been a long-serving Rawway Councilman for many, many years. I've seen him at so many events. He's done a great job representing the county of Raw, the city of Rawway. Then when this next opportunity arose, myself, in consultation with his local chairperson, O'Brien, and his mayor, Ray Giacobi, a dear friend, there was no other person that we'd rather have up here joining this illustrious group of county commissioners. You deserve this job. You deserve to be here, and I'm really happy that you won. I'm happy to introduce you today. And with that, I'm gonna call upon the mayor of Rawway, a dear friend, Ray Giacobi. He'll be administering the oath of office to James Baker. And holding the Bible for Commissioner Baker Jr. is his cousin, Reverend Raymond Wallace. Please come forward. Stay there. Reb, come right over here.
Before we swear James Baker in, I just want to talk about leadership. When I first became a councilman, I sat next to Mr. Baker, Councilman Baker. And he didn't know me very well. Of course, you know, we talked during the campaign, but he sat down and he said, "Son, if there's anything you need, here's my number. I'm a phone call away." He handed me a pen, and that meant the world to me. And I called on him many of times throughout my career on council, just to call, get his opinion, chat. We didn't always agree, but we always had the mutual respect for each other, James. It's an honor to be here to swear you, and I want to thank you for this honor.
Thank you for being here. Come on, closer. Yes. You walk over there this way. Put your left hand on the Bible. Raise your right hand. Okay, here we go.
Please repeat after me. I, James E. Baker Jr.
I, James E. Baker Jr.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office.
All the duties of the office.
Of County Commissioner.
Of County Commissioner.
Of the Union County Board of County Commissioners.
Of the Union County Board of County Commissioners.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
To the governments established.
To the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Commissioner, it's an honor to be here. Thank you.
While we're doing all the official business, I do want to say to the County Commissioner Board, thank you for still holding this. There was a lot of thought to maybe do it virtually. We scaled it down, but I'm really proud to be here. You deserve the accolades because of all the hard work you do each and every year. This is the one time when everybody's here to say nice things about you. I know that this room is filled with people that don't want to say nice things sometimes, but you do the right thing every time. And I'm so proud that we're all part of this organization. With that, please welcome, we're gonna, we'll take it after his remarks. Commissioner James Baker, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner. Whoa, I was getting ready to say Commissioner Scatari. That would be a demotion. But I do want to say thank you to our party chairman, our senator from the 22nd District. And, you know, I want to thank him for the opportunity for
and you know, I want to thank him for the opportunity for being here, first of all. You know, it was a funny thing, when his office called me, I didn't know what the heck was going on. I said, "What did I do wrong?" You know, I said, "I didn't do anything wrong." But then I returned the call and found out that I didn't do anything wrong. And he offered me an opportunity to stand before you here today. And I want to thank the party for all of their hard work and being able to put me here today. It took a tremendous amount of effort, a lot of commitment, a lot of dedication to win in November. The governor is gone, but it was a pleasure campaigning with the governor. And, excuse me, and as the mayor of Rawway said, I have been a Councilman in Rawway for the past 16 years, 15, 16 years. I've been an employee for the county of Union for the last 29 years. And so my political and my professional career has been in public service. So I hope to be able to continue to do my best for the citizens of Rawway, for the citizens of Union County as a Commissioner, and I will try to faithfully execute my office, the responsibilities and duties therefore. Thank you very much.
It is really a great honor I get to introduce our County Commissioner. He is a former Freeholder with me, the last one on the board that served with me when I used to sit in the same room. And I think we were the last ones to sit in the room when it used to be configured in a different direction before we reconfigured. Al Mirabella is the Dean of our Freeholder Board. He's a great Commissioner, he's a great friend, he's a great public servant, along with his wonderful family here. I've known him for almost three decades now, been a while, two and a half at least. And he's really what public service is all about. He's a great friend, and I know that everyone here is going to extend a warm welcome, and I'm going to bring him up with his family. And I'm going to call upon the governor to give him the oath of office. Commissioner Mirabella.
I, Alexander Mirabella.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will faithfully.
that I will faithfully.
impartially.
impartially.
and justly perform.
and justly perform.
all the duties of the office.
all the duties of the office.
of County Commissioner.
of County Commissioner.
of the Union County Board of County Commissioners.
of the Union County Board of County Commissioners.
according to the best of my abilities.
according to the best of my abilities.
so help me God.
so help me God.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution.
that I will support the Constitution.
of the United States.
of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
and that I will bear true faith.
and I will bear true faith.
and allegiance to the same.
and allegiance to the same.
to the governments established.
to the governments established.
in the United States.
in the United States.
and in the state.
and in the state.
under the authority of the people.
under the authority of the people.
so help me God.
so help me God.
congratulations. You got a team shot?
Yeah. Want to stand in front of her?
Yeah, yeah. Come on, everybody. Ready? Two minutes, Al. You know, I almost didn't let Al speak because of what he did the last time he was chairman. We all remember that. Commissioner Mirabella.
Yeah, I remember very well, Senator, so I am. I know, you remind me frequently. As I enter my 25th year as a county-elected official, I'm truly humbled to be here to serve the residents of Union County for my ninth term. I'd like to thank Governor Murphy for taking the time to swear me in today. I'm continuously impressed with his leadership, specifically his genuine care for the people of New Jersey. His handling of the pandemic was a model in crisis management. Thank you, Governor, for all you do. Special thanks to Senator and Chairman Skatari for his tireless leadership in our county. It was no surprise to me that his colleagues in the state senate are poised to make him the senate president next week. Senator, I know you will help our state to even better days. I appreciate our long friendship. I wish to really give Chair, incoming Chair Williams and Vice Chair Hudak, I wish them all the best for a successful year. Chair Williams has set out an ambitious agenda for a set of initiatives. I'm proud to know her and work hard, and I know she'll continue to work hard for the residents of our county. The last few years have been particularly challenging, but we've emerged more agile and responsive to our residents. We basically reinvented how government services delivered. I'd like to thank my colleagues for all their help and support during my last two years under my chairmanship. They worked hard, I'm grateful for all your efforts. My sincere congratulations to my running mates, Kim Mudad and James Baker. I look forward to serving with both of you for the next three years. Many thanks to County Manager Oatman and Deputy County Manager Wagner for their outstanding leadership in the day-to-day operation of our county. Together with our directors, they execute our vision and provide the vital services to our residents. Lastly, I want to thank my family for all their love and support. My children, Alex and Michaela, who grew up in government and have had the two public servants for parents. They've grown into fine adults who will work hard and give back to their community. I particularly want to thank my wife, Phyllis, who is my daily inspiration, my most trusted advisor, the woman I love. Her support is unwavering and her advice always thoughtful. I love you. I know this Commissioner Board will beat all the challenges that await us in 2022 and work hard for our residents, and I want to wish everyone a happy and healthy New Year. Thank you.
Next, it is really my honor and pleasure to introduce to you for her second time, Commissioner Kimberly Palmieri-Mudad. She's done a heck of a job. She, really a stand-up person, really got to know her a few years ago during the Chairperson's fight, when not everybody in her town was really in favor of me, but, to say the least. But her and her husband really came forward, and we campaigned tirelessly together. We knocked on every door in Westfield. Some of them were slammed on us, but we kept going. And I really grew to appreciate that service and that dedication, that loyalty. I was so happy to see her become a County Commissioner three years ago, and even happier to see her get reelected. She is a wonderful public servant, she's got a beautiful family, you're going to meet some of them, not all of them, I don't think, but you're going to meet some of them today. I don't know how she does it all, I really don't. She balances the, all the intensities of being a County Commissioner. She's got a wonderful, unbelievable educational experience and professional experience before that, and all those great kids. And she even keeps George in line somehow. So with that, I want to introduce to you Commissioner Kimberly Palmieri-Mudad, please come forward. Swearing her in will be Governor Phil Murphy, and holding the Bible will be her husband, George, joined by their twin sons, Matthew and Christopher, son Nicholas, son Ryan, and daughter Adeline. Now, they're all coming up, I was wrong.
I brought them all.
Yeah, I don't know if my, yeah, I may, sorry for the, the Bible, no, she forgot it. The Bible, no, okay. That's my dad.
Mom's going to put her left hand on it, and her right hand.
I state your name.
I, Kimberly Palmieri-Mudad.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will faithfully.
that I will faithfully.
impartially.
impartially.
and justly perform.
and justly perform.
all the duties of the office.
all the duties of the office.
of County Commissioner.
of County Commissioner.
of the Union County Board of County Commissioners.
of the Union County Board of County Commissioners.
according to the best of my abilities.
according to the best of my abilities.
so help me God.
so help me God.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution.
that I will support the Constitution.
of the United States.
of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
and that I will bear true faith.
and I will bear true faith.
and allegiance to the same.
and allegiance to the same.
and to the governments established.
and to the governments established.
in the United States.
in the United States.
and in this state.
and in this state.
under the authority of the people.
under the authority of the people.
so help me God.
so help me God.
congratulations.
Thank you, Governor Murphy, for joining us here tonight. It has been an honor to be sworn in by you. It was also wonderful to campaign with you. It was kind of fun being on the ticket with the governor. I appreciate all of your leadership, especially these past two years, and I look forward to four more years. Thank you, Senator Skatari, for your confidence in me. I had this tremendous opportunity because of you, and I look forward to continuing to work with you and hopefully in this next chapter as senate president. I would like to acknowledge my running mates, Al Mirabella and James Baker, along with all of my colleagues on the Commissioner Board, Sergio, Rebecca, BJ, Chris, Lourdes, and Angela. It's a privilege to know and work with each one of you. We also have the best county manager, deputy county manager, department heads, county employees, and volunteers that make our county so unique. Most importantly, I would like to recognize and thank my family. I have been the most fortunate person to have had parents who have always made me believe that I could be and do absolutely anything in this world. They encourage me to be strong, confident, and committed to whatever role I am in. And as luck would have it, 13 years ago, I was blessed with in-laws that made me feel the exact same way. I cannot even express how special today is that my parents and my in-laws are here two years ago to today. My father-in-law had a critical illness, and we never imagined that we would be here. And I cannot tell you what an honor it is to have my mother and father-in-law here with me today. As for my husband and my children, there is no one that inspires me more. Everything that I do is for you. George, this whole thing does not work without your support, and I thank you every day for that. Matthew, Christopher, Nicholas, Ryan, and Adeline, I hope I make you as proud as you make me. You define who I am, and I'm so blessed to have you all here with me tonight. March of 2020 put a pause on literally every plan we had, but instead of sitting back, county government stepped up in a major way to provide for our residents. From the very beginning of the pandemic, Union County was at the forefront, providing PPE, testing, food, and later vaccines to all of our residents. It was an all-hands-on-deck event, and I even have to shout out my mom, who I think is outside with my daughter, but my mom even came out of nursing retirement to administer thousands of vaccines over the past year. We were able to pivot quickly to provide services virtually, outdoors, and in other creative ways, so that our residents were never without assistance. I am so proud of what we have and continue to do on a daily basis to fight through this pandemic. Although it certainly was the defining aspect of my first term, I know we will get through this and be able to accomplish so much more in the next three years. I am humbled to be here, elected, and sworn in to my second term as Union County Commissioner. I look forward to serving our residents well for the next three years. Thank you so much.
I will call the 2022 Union County Board of County Commissioners Reorganizational Meeting to order. At this time, it's my pleasure to call the roll of the 2022 Board of County Commissioners. Commissioner Baker Jr.
Here.
Commissioner Garrettson. Commissioner Granados.
Here.
Commissioner Kowalski. Commissioner Leone.
Here.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Present.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mudad.
Here.
Commissioner Hudak.
Present.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Let the records show, there are seven Commissioners in attendance for today's reorganizational meeting. At this time, I'm going to read a statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. The Board of Chosen, sorry, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of the New Jersey Statute Sanitated 10, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this 2022 reorganizational meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, County of Union, has been given by mailing to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice, and by posting the 2022 reorganizational meeting notice in the Administration Building, and further by filing the 2022 reorganizational meeting with the Office of the County Clerk. Furthermore, the 2022 reorganizational meeting notice has been posted to the official website of the County of Union. At this time, I'll call the prayer and salute to the flag. Humbly we ask God to give her peace and the love of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will, and to grant the light of his spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first order of business will be the election of a Chair. In order to do so, we will elect a Chairman Pro Tem. Commissioners, do I have a nomination for a Chairman Pro Tem?
Clerk, it would be my honor to nominate Commissioner Al Mirabella as Chair Pro Tem. He served our Board extraordinarily well over the past two years, and this would be an honor for me to do.
There's a nomination for Chairman, there's a nomination for Chairman Pro Tem, Al Mirabella. Is there a second?
Second.
There was a second, there was a motion for a nomination and a second. I will now do the roll call. Commissioner Baker.
Aye.
Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Leone.
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mudad.
Aye.
Commissioner Hudak.
Aye.
And Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Seven votes in the affirmative, we have a Commissioner, we have a Chairman Pro Tem, Al Mirabella. The meeting is yours.
Thank you very much, and thank you, fellow Commissioners, for this honor. As Chairman Pro Tem, it's my pleasure to nominate a Chair for the 2022 Union County Board of County Commissioners. It's my distinct honor and pleasure to nominate Rebecca Williams from the beautiful city of Plainfield, representing all our county, someone I know to be a very dedicated public servant, a great family person, someone who cares deeply about her community and her county, and it's my pleasure and honor to nominate her for Chair of our Board. May I have a second?
With great enthusiasm, I second that nomination.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Granados. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker.
Aye.
Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Leone.
Aye.
Commissioner. Commissioner Palmary Mouded.
Aye.
Commissioner Hudak.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
And Chairman Pro Tem Mirabella.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem, seven votes in the affirmative.
Congratulations, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you everyone.
At this time, I'd like to call up the Honorable Senator Nicholas Skatari to administer the Chair Affirmation for Office. Joining Chair Williams is her parents Veronica Taylor along with her brother, her partner Veronica Taylor along with her brother Richard Williams, her sister Renita Williams, her cousin Talina Alfred, her friend Kenneth Lucas, her godson Liam Phillips Brown and her godson Finley Phillips Brown.
Repeat after me. I, Rebecca Williams.
I, Rebecca Williams.
do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
impartially.
impartially.
and justly perform.
and justly perform.
all the duties.
all the duties.
of the office.
of the office.
of Chair.
of Chair.
of the Union County Board.
of the Union County Board.
County Commissioners.
County Commissioners.
according to the best of my abilities.
according to the best of my abilities.
I do further solemnly affirm.
I do further solemnly affirm.
that I will support the Constitution.
that I will support the Constitution.
of the United States.
of the United States.
and the Constitution.
and the Constitution.
of the state of New Jersey.
of the state of New Jersey.
and that I will bear true faith.
and that I will bear true faith.
and allegiance to the same.
and allegiance to the same.
to the governments established.
to the governments established.
in the United States.
in the United States.
and in this state.
and in this state.
under the authority of the people.
under the authority of the people.
Congratulations, Madam Chair.
First things first. So now I can say parting my back.
About one more. Rebecca. About one more, the mayor, the senator.
Oh, yes.
It is my honor now to call for a motion to nominate a Vice Chairman of the 2022 Union County Board of County Commissioners.
It's a great honor to nominate the vigil who truly has been one of our leaders amongst the Commissioner Board and somebody who, when I first came on to this freeholder board then, kind of took me underneath his wing too to make sure that he was always there to provide guidance and provide information to me and somebody who continues to provide great service to the residents of the County of Union. And with that said, I would nominate Christopher Hudak as Vice Chair of this Commissioner Board.
A motion, a motion was made by Commissioner Granados to nominate Commissioner Christopher Hudak as Vice Chairman. May I have a second?
I'm proud to second.
Okay, we've got a second by Commissioner Mirabella. Seeing no other nominations, Clerk of the Board, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Commissioner Baker.
Aye.
Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Aye.
Commissioner Palmary Mouded.
Aye.
Commissioner Hudak.
Aye.
Chair Williams.
Aye.
Chair, you have seven votes in the affirmative?
Congratulations, Vice Chairman Hudak. If you would like to go up now, it is my pleasure to call upon the Honorable Senator Nicholas Skatari to administer the oath of office to Vice Chair Hudak. Joining Vice Chair Hudak for his oath of office is his wife Terry, joined by their daughter Catherine Katie, son Jackson and the Honorable Judge John Hudak. His father.
Come on this John, John, come into the center. You put your left hand on there, raise your right hand. This way we can all be seen. Raise your right hand. Now that looks lovely. Raise your right hand, Commissioner. I, Christopher Hudak.
I, Christopher Hudak.
do solemnly swear.
do solemnly swear.
that I will faithfully.
that I will faithfully.
impartially.
impartially.
and justly perform.
and justly perform.
all the duties.
all the duties.
of the office.
of the office.
of Vice Chair.
of Vice Chair.
of the Union County.
of Union County.
Board of Chosen, Board of County Commissioners.
Board of County Commissioners.
See, I didn't look. According to the best of my abilities.
according to the best of my abilities.
so help me God.
so help me God.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution.
that I will support the Constitution.
of the United States.
of the United States.
and the Constitution.
and the Constitution.
of the state of New Jersey.
of the state of New Jersey.
and that I will bear true faith.
and I will bear true faith.
and allegiance to the same.
and allegiance to the same.
to the governments established.
to the governments established.
in the United States.
in the United States.
and in this state.
and in this state.
under the authority of the people.
under the authority of the people.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Vice Chairman.
At this time, it is my pleasure to introduce Chair Williams to offer and deliver her 2022 Chair Address.
Thank you Clerk of the Board. Good evening everyone and thank you for joining me at this year's 2022 Reorganization Meeting. And while you see that this is not our traditional reorganization meeting due to the surge in positive COVID cases, I'm still very happy to be here in person at the first meeting of the new year. Public safety is and remains one of our top priorities and will continue to make the necessary decisions to keep us as healthy as possible. I'm glad that Chair Skatari, Senator Skatari, acknowledged our dear friend Jim La Court, who passed away a few weeks ago. And again, we offer our prayers to the entire family. Jim was a fabulous person and everyone agreed that he was an amazing surrogate and a friend of all families who had to work through his office. Congratulations to Commissioners Mirabella and Palmary Mouded on their successful election and a special welcome to our newest elected Commissioner, James Baker, as well as all those who won their elections in legislative districts 20, 21, 22 across Union County and especially to Governor Murphy and Lieutenant Governor Sheila Oliver on their successful reelection. I would also like to acknowledge, from Plainfield, Councilwoman Ashley Davis is here. And most importantly, I want to acknowledge my Mayor Adrian O'Mapp, who is here on the occasion of his third historic win as Mayor of the great city of Plainfield, New Jersey. I would also like to again congratulate Senator Nicholas Skatari as the new Senate President designee. Your previous work demonstrates what a strong advocate you are and have been for all of New Jersey and this designation will bring so much to Union County. I'm looking forward to seeing what's to come. So it is with great honor that I stand before you for the first time as Chair for 2022. In 2021, our theme was Union County Rising and despite the circumstances, we did rise. Thanks to former Chairman Al Mirabella, who led us through actually the past two years. It takes a great leader to guide us during a time of uncertainty and it was his ability to adapt and change direction that, as needed, that took us to new heights. Al's management and dedication over the past two years is why we were able to face this difficult and tragic time and rise through some very dark days. I would also be remiss if I did not thank the rest of my colleagues here on the Board of Commissioners, as well as all the staff, partners and volunteers for their unconditional support. The unparalleled magnitude of the horrors wrought by this pandemic caused many of us to pause and reflect on how we measure what is important in our lives. And even as we continue to work to build back our economy from the devastating effects of the pandemic, and I would like to acknowledge that it was not easy to get there. Our Board of Commissioners was able to provide all the services, programs and help our residents needed. And we did so with a 0% tax increase for the past two years. We understand. We stayed connected as a county, a state. It was acknowledged earlier that this is the one-year anniversary where there were those who wanted to undermine us as a nation, but we are still here. And as we continue to come to terms with all of the changes, it is important for us to remember how we came together. While we cannot foresee how long the pandemic will last and the final impact it will have on us, it was our connections and the prompt actions of county personnel and partnerships that we were able to get through it. It was with those. Public meetings were held virtually. Government services were accessible to residents online or via the phone and communications were increased through our website and social media accounts to maintain a high level of information flow to our residents. In addition, we worked with public safety, human services and several other departments to make sure the county had the necessary resources to directly reach our residents and we took action. I don't know anyone who has not suffered tremendous loss throughout the past two years, who hasn't had to bury a loved one or mourn from a distance via Zoom. But that has been dictated by the pandemic to keep us safe. To that end, we mobilized the first county-run COVID testing site in the state of New Jersey at Kane University. We secured vaccine sites for our residents at several locations throughout the county, including our mobile unit. We made sure those experiencing an overwhelming loss of jobs, family members, friends, or just experiencing general hardships had food on their table from our food distribution programs. We expanded jobs, job fairs and job training programs and we helped provide social services to all those who needed the extra help. When the vaccine rolled out, my colleagues on the board were overwhelmed with phone calls, emails and texts from residents who wanted assistance immediately. And through the tireless efforts of our county manager Ed Oatman and his team, we were able to meet those needs. With our county team at the forefront, we made sure that the proper safety protocols were put in place to protect our employees and our residents while still providing the services they needed and deserve. There's no more important responsibility to us as Commissioners, as a county government, than to keep our residents safe and to provide ways for them to live, thrive and succeed. So as we continue to move forward, my Chair initiatives for 2022 are titled Connecting Our Community. As an educator, teaching by way of Zoom for three very long semesters, I know firsthand the struggles my students had trying to access Wi-Fi. So I have a goal of ensuring that we remain connected and that we, and as we expand our ways that we communicate with residents, we will continue to provide ways for them to do so. So my first initiative will be called Technology and Infrastructure: Being Connected Matters. We normally think of infrastructure as electricity, water systems or transit, but in recent years and a generational shift, we're seeing that a communication infrastructure matters. So one of the most important initiatives we'll be undertaking this year is getting our county more connected. We're currently in the process of developing an all-inclusive county-wide fiber ring. Funded through dollars from the American Rescue Plan Act, this fiber ring will be completed in three phases. Phases one and two are set to begin early this year in 2022. Connectivity between county buildings and our park system will be addressed in these first two phases. Phase three will add municipal buildings and police departments to the network. Once complete, the life expectancy of this fiber network is 20 years and it will aid us in bridging the digital divide to better ensure public safety and overall network reliability. One of the biggest concerns that was highlighted even more during the pandemic was the social isolation that many residents faced after having to quarantine. So the next initiative is called Making Connections for Mental Health and Well-Being. Many experience stress, anxiety, grief after not being able to report to work, visit their loved ones, visit friends, neighbors, or even just being able to see friendly faces in public. The mental and emotional well-being of our residents is of utmost importance as we move forward in this new year. And I'm going to focus on exploring and adding to the mental health services that we already offer here in Union County. From providing community education and a connection to our programs to developing new strategies and ways to reach our residents, I will work with the Department of Human Services, led ably by Debi Anne Anderson, to continue to ensure our constituents know that they are not alone. Strong connections to the arts, culture, education and recreation are essential characteristics of a community that values everyone's quality of life. So my next two initiatives, Connections Through Cultural Enrichment and Recreation and Connecting and Engaging Residents, introduces a series of programs that will not only help define and express who Union County is as a community, but also help significantly contribute and enrich our ever-changing environment. I will develop an arts and cultural drama development program, which would be specifically open for emerging playwrights to develop their work in funding staged readings, hiring actors, renting facilities such as UC PAC and more. Infusing arts, culture and recreation within our county's fabric will continue to show us and demonstrate our county as a place of distinction. From the creation of the Office of LGBTQ Affairs to flag raisings and monthly empowerment conversations, Union County has made great strides in making sure everyone feels included. And this year, we will cut the ribbon on the new inclusive park at Cedar Brook Park in Plainfield, which was designed with the idea to make all residents feel included, accepted and engaged. It will feature a playground with intergenerational attractions, traditional playground equipment and auditory and musical expression and the first meditation maze in Union County. So continuing with the theme of everyone feeling connected and involved, I'm creating an intergenerational community engagement program in which young people can work with senior citizens on different projects. Social connectedness for those who are especially shut in is extremely important for the health of our senior population. And as I mentioned earlier, throughout the pandemic, we recognized the importance of maintaining relationships and not being isolated, not feeling isolated. The simplest things such as phone calls, writing cards, virtual hospital or home visits could change the mental and emotional health outlook for people in our county. And this project will be focused on including our most vulnerable population. The challenges we faced were countless. They were not always easy to solve. were not always easy to solve, but we had the opportunity and the resources to meet them head-on. Our Union County team was available and prepared to work together during a year of hardship and loss, and we owed it, we owe it to those who elected us to build a county that is truly healthier, connected, and stronger. I am so honored to serve you all as Chair, and I'm certain that if we stay connected and work together as one Union County, our future will be bright. May you know that I am here for you, that we are here for you, and we will get through anything together. Thank you so much. Thank you all so much. So at this time, I'll call for a motion to enter into recess.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Okay. A motion was made by Commissioner Mirabella and seconded by Commissioner, Vice Chair Hudak. Okay, Clerk of the Board, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Baker.
Aye.
Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri Mueded.
Aye.
Vice Chair Hudak.
Aye.
And Chair Williams.
Aye.
Chair, you have seven votes in the affirmative.
Okay, thank you. We are now recessed. Okay, at this time, I will call for a motion to return from recess.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
Whoever, second.
Okay. A motion was made by Commissioner Mirabella, seconded by Commissioner Baker. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Baker.
Aye.
Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri Mueded.
Aye.
Vice Chair Hudak.
Aye.
And Chair Williams.
Aye.
Chair, you have seven votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve communications?
So moved, Chair. Second.
Okay. Yeah, all right. A motion was made by Vice Chair Hudak and seconded by Commissioner Mirabella. Clerk of the Board, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Baker Jr.
Aye.
Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri Mueded.
Aye.
Vice Chair Hudak.
Aye.
And Chair Williams.
Aye.
Chair, you have seven votes in the affirmative on the communications.
Thank you. May I now have a motion to suspend the rules to allow for the joining of both the public comment on resolutions being offered for adoption and the public comment on any governmental issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the county as one public comment session?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Okay. May I, okay. That was moved by Commissioner Mirabella and seconded by Commissioner Palmieri Mueded. Clerk of the Board, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Baker Jr.
Aye.
Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri Mueded.
Aye.
Vice Chair Hudak.
Aye.
And Chair Williams.
Aye.
Chair, that's seven votes in the affirmative on the suspension of the rules.
Thank you. The meeting is now open to anyone wishing to speak on resolutions being offered for adoption or on any matter. Kindly state your name and town of residence for the record, and adhere to the five-minute time limit.
Antoinette.
Okay. I see no speakers, so I will formally close this portion of the meeting and ask to have a motion to adopt resolutions 2022-1 through 2022-89.
So moved, Chair.
Second.
Okay, that was moved by Vice Chair Hudak and seconded, seconded by Commissioner Mirabella. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Baker Jr.
Aye.
Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri Mueded.
Aye.
Vice Chair Hudak.
Aye.
Chair Williams.
Aye.
Chair, that's seven votes in the affirmative on all resolutions.
Thank you so much. And now I would just like to ask for any remarks by Commissioners, and I'll look for hands if anyone has anything to say. Okay, Commissioner Leon, we'll start with you.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to congratulate you, Madam Chair Rebecca Williams, Vice Chair Hudak. Many congratulations to the newly-elected Commissioner Baker, and also to my Commissioners Mirabella and Kimberly. And I just want to wish everyone a very happy New Year, and looking forward to working with this great group of people another year here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Granados.
Thank you, Chair. Just want to, once again, look forward to your leadership alongside Vice Chair Hudak in this coming year and the progressiveness that we continue to take. Want to wish all the residents, our directors, and county family a happy New Year, and also when it looks forward to our county commissioners who came back, Kim and Al, and our newcomer Baker, who definitely brings a wealth of knowledge from not only of Rawaway, but from his public service, like you mentioned before. So look forward to continuing having this county move forward in the right direction. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Granados. Commissioner Palmieri Mueded.
Thank you, Chair. And I too wanted to send my congratulations to yourself and our new Vice Chair Hudak. Looking forward to a great year, and hopefully sooner than later we will be out of this surge and back to our new normal. So thank you, and thank you for everyone who came today. Happy New Year.
Thank you, Commissioner Palmieri Mueded. Let's see. Oh, Commissioner Baker Jr.
Thank you. I want to congratulate our newly-elected officers here on the board. Excuse me. And I just want to say on behalf of myself that I, that I think that this is gonna be a very, I am honored to be working with all of the Commissioners on the board. As a councilman, I've had working relationships with a lot of people here on the commission, and so it's my honor to be able to look forward to working with them as a county commissioner to move Union County forward, to continue its growth and development, and experience the kinds of things that the residents of Union County should look forward to from their, from their, from their government. And I just want to say, Happy New Year. I wish everybody a healthy and prosperous New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Baker. Commissioner Mirabella.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chair. A couple of quick things for me. I want to welcome Kelly Martins, our new public information officer, to our weekly meeting or bi-weekly meetings, and welcome to the family. I want to thank particularly one person, Lisa Bullock, for her work over the last couple of years, helping manage all the aides and our staff that help us. Lisa, thank you for all you do. Appreciate you and your, and your group. Congratulations Chair Williams and Vice Chair Hudak. I look forward to serving in, in your administration moving forward, working together. It's gonna be an interesting year and a fun year, and hopefully a soon-to-be COVID-free year. I want to say one of the, two other quick things. One, my sister-in-law, Antoinette, had several questions about Broad Street and Summit. She didn't want to, she didn't want to come forward, but I handled the constituents' questions ahead of time, so we didn't have to take time during the meeting. So, Antoinette, thank you for bringing that up. I'll keep working on those issues in that area. And actually, and actually Commissioner Granados picked up on this, and I had a, actually a dream of mine realized tonight, and it was that we had all I's in our voting, which was, I think, the first time it's ever happened. So that was a significant dream and on my bucket list. So I'm glad that I was able to, to get that out of the way and check that off the bucket list. So that's nice, and I congratulate Commissioner Baker and I welcome him to the I-team. I didn't even have to talk to him about it. He already knew that. And with that, with all jokes aside, I look forward to this year. I appreciate all of you and what you do day in, day out, and I just want to wish all our residents and county staff and county family a happy New Year. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Mirabella. And finally, let us hear from our new Vice Chair, Vice Chair Commissioner Hudak.
Thank you, Chair. First, let me congratulate you, and I look forward to serving under you this year. You have laid out an exciting agenda of initiatives, and I know this board is ready to work hard to make those initiatives a reality. You know, it was noted a few times this evening about, about January the 6th, and this is a one-year anniversary, and certainly the appreciation we all have of the fragileness of democracy. But tonight is not about fragility. Tonight is about celebration, and I want to congratulate the three Commissioners who were installed today, who were elected through the democratic process. Councilman, now Commissioner Baker, I've had the pleasure of working with you for many years. Welcome. We look forward to your insights, and we know you'll hit the floor running. Kim Mueded, you know, Al Mirabella and I would always talk of, you know, I would go to Al to talk about, you know, having two kids and being a Commissioner and going to events, and then Kim Palmieri Mueded shows up and says, "Hold my drink," and adds, and adds a daughter in the middle of a pandemic. She's everywhere. She's, she's done a great job as a Commissioner, and I've really enjoyed working with you. And, and your daughter deserves ice cream for saying, "Mommy" in the middle of the oath of office. And, and my dear friend Al Mirabella, it's been such a privilege to work with you these many years, coming off of your chairmanship, and, you know, a well-earned seat to the right of the county council for this year, you know, with two years of a tough hoe of being chairman. But I look forward to continuing to work with you and with this administration. And I want to thank this board for showing the faith in me to serve as Vice Chair this year. I will, I will do my best to assist the Chair in accomplishing her goals. I wanted to express my thanks to our incoming Senate President, a dear friend, Nick Scutari, for swearing me in this evening, my dad for being here, my wife Terry, Jackson, and Katie, and for being part of the ceremony. And, and lastly, you know, I just wanted to express my condolences to the family of Jim La Court, a good family, friend for many years. Jim, I actually knew Jim for many years before an elected official. His house, it was next to my grandparents' house in Elizabeth, and so I knew him as a, not as a public official, but that came later in life. And the lesson I took from Jim was always that people often would be coming into Union County's courthouse for probably the toughest day of their lives, and he would, and he would always remind us of that. You know, and they, and they may be there for something great, but a lot of times, it's just a tough day, and especially in the surrogate's office. And he always handled that position with dignity and grace, and he will certainly be missed. So with that, Chair, I wish you the best luck in 2022. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair Hudak. Yeah, and just, I also want to offer a welcome to Kelly Martins as our new OPI person. I want to thank Ed Oatman, our county manager, our county counsel, Bruce Bergen is also here with us. I want to thank Deputy County Manager Amy Wagner. These are the folks who make today and make every day happen in our county. And, and I do just want to acknowledge, I'm so glad that Commissioner Mirabella acknowledged our aides and the leadership and the hard work that they do to also make sure that everything goes well and goes smoothly. I applaud you all for your hard work. And then my final thanks goes to our Clerk of the Board, Jim, James Pelletier. James Pelletier does a yeoman's job. So I'm looking forward to a, a good, strong year, and I think that with that, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Okay, that was moved by Commissioner Mirabella, seconded by Commissioner Palmieri Mueded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any abstaining? Any opposed? No? Okay. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Good night. Get home safely.